Get nine o'clock, let's stand for the pledge, Ryan's gonna lead us. Welcome Benny David.
Here.
Roger Mahieu.
Yep.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Greg Scott.
Here.
I believe we're gonna, under F, we're gonna put the USDA patrol grants, patrol related to patrol cars.
Right.
You wanted that?
Yep.
Any other additions or corrections to the agenda commissioners?
No.
Good.
Item three, public comment. This is for agenda items only, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item four, appointments, Randy Booth, equalization director related to the 2023 winter tax four zero two nine. Come on up Randy.
Very curious. Everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think you've all got copies, the this year's forty twenty nine and these are the loveys, the maximum weekend for each of the extra voted millages that we have. One thing in particular, I wanted to make sure you're all aware. They all expire in twenty twenty three, except for one of them transit, which is twenty twenty four, so. You'll be looking a lot of millage elections next year to do this.
I took this last night. Ready to get that? Oh, did you have something?
Yeah.
Commissioner Simmons?
I see all these villages on here and then. And then, oh, they're all renewed. What do you think it was to get our headly rollback price zero one?
Headly rollbacks traditionally have been hard for communities to approve.
Yeah.
I think the biggest problem is most of them just throw it on a ballot and they say it's meaning, hey, we need to have this. They don't have a specific plan. I think to to maintain the services that you provide for the county is something that the board definitely needs to consider for next year. But I think you have to plan in place and looking at the cuts, Tim has proposed for this year that if your, if the headly override isn't passed, these are the type of cuts and reduction services that residents will face. And then really get out and educate them, not just at the township meeting, but be an absolute push and explain the situation, what's going on, look at the financials from two thousand ten till now. Because part of the headly, when you look at these millage reductions, part of the issue is when the assessments rolled back in two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, because of the two thousand eight mortgage crisis, you lost a significant amount of taxable value which you not recoup. We're just now approaching the two thousand seven, two thousand eight levels. I'd have to look at the totals specifically for you, but our, our overall equalized values and taxable values are just approaching what was already here ten years ago, twelve years ago. And though everything else has gone up during that time, except the tax revenues.
Will you be in your office after, after this meeting?
I will be.
Might like to come and talk to you a little bit about this.
Any, if you'd like to come and talk to me about it.
Pardon me?
I said, if any of the commissioners don't come talk to me about anything.
Yeah, you know. You want to? Well, I mean, I, I think it's a great opportunity for us. And I think what you're saying is the key indicator for this to be successful, we need start early and start educating.
Absolutely, and, and you have to have a plan in place that this is what's going to happen if it doesn't pass. You know, we're going to have to lay off deputies, we're going to have to lay off staff, services that we provide and have an actual plan in place. This is what you're going to lose if it doesn't pass. Because you're at a point now with the type of deaths that you're looking at, you don't have options to delay it anymore.
I, I understand that, but looking at these, all these that expire in twenty twenty three, adding another one is gonna, to me, is gonna look like voter exhaustion, I believe that's what it's called. I think possibly throwing another one on there could make it so some of these other millages don't continue. That's seven, one, two, three, four, five, six, six villages.
Just ours.
There's multiple townships that are. Are gonna have their own, I mean, that's just county level.
Well, and it's, it's, yes, people are gonna see a lot of millage elections. There was discussion a couple of years ago about staggering these villages, they asked, because all of them coming do it the same year is not enviable in any regard, I mean, they're in moving forward, and even when you look at putting these on the ballot, some of them need to be four or five years or maybe six years, so that some are coming due every couple of years, that you're not having five or six villages in one election cycle.
I agree, something's gonna have to be staggered there, that's pretty overwhelming for us to look at from a county perspective, but alone not adding townships on.
Well, I thought, I thought Sherwood was a five year.
No.
Yes, but it's inclusive, so started the first year and goes through for a bunch of years.
The road patrol?
Well, it was voted on in eleven of twenty.
Yes, and it was put on the twenty twenty winter taxes, so twenty, twenty one, twenty two, twenty three, and twenty four. Right.
So it should be twenty four, twenty five then?
I'll look at it, but I'm pretty sure it was for four years, the twenty three is the expiration date. That's what we've had on this, and I can review that ballot language and make sure.
Okay. So I thought it was three.
I don't see the rollback being so significant here. Seniors is seven, five is the original, we're down to seven, four, eight, six, so it's less than one percent.
Because all of these villages are less than four or five years old, so the, the rollbacks have not been significant the last few years. This year, there's no rollback. But when you go back years ago, in, in the counties, you're looking at these rollbacks, been going on since the seventies, since when you're over a mill reduction.
Right, right. But we're not seeing that in, in our case. We're just, we're just fractions here. Is it really worth putting another question on just for that fraction? Small fraction?
I'm, I'm not. My, my recommendation wasn't to do a headly override on all of these. These all expire because they're extra voted villages. Now, each agent's again determined, do they want to go back to the original amount? Do they, some of them have renewed, like EMS just renews it, whatever the rollback rate is the last election cycle. They're not asking to go back to the original village. And each of those ballot issues, you guys can decide if you want to ask for the full amount or that amount. The only one that's subject to the headly override is the operating village of the county. Because that doesn't go before the voters, that was voted on in nineteen sixty five and it's, it's in place.
Right. We just adopt to how many mills we want.
Yes, originally it was voted on for seven point two mills, now you're at six point zero nine three one, I believe.
That's the headway we want to roll back.
Yes, these, because these are actually voted, during the term that they're in, they can, they can roll back and, and, but they're not subject, they're subject to the headly as long as they're in place, but most of these are four or five year villages, they're not. You know, the, it's the operational knowledge that you need to worry about to roll back.
Right.
Yeah. Can you have a question?
I have a comment though. We have said this before, if certain things don't pass, like when MSU Melishin passed for a time through, that it would go away and unbeknownst to us. MSU knew all the time it wasn't gonna go away. We're out there, so population says, yeah, it always says it's gonna go away and it never goes away. That's, that's what we're gonna have to.
Well, and I would say MSU stayed here, but in Escoda County, it went away because the voters didn't pass the ballot. It's, but MSU extension's out there in neighboring counties, but we have, we do not have it in Escoda County because the voters didn't pass it. And if they hadn't have passed it here, they, this county could have cut MSU extension as well.
I know, but but when we talked, and I understand what you're saying, but we were led to believe that it doesn't pass, it won't be here this year. And then it was there that year when, when it didn't pass.
I thought MSU extension passed the first time.
Here?
Yes, it did pass the first time.
I guess it was because.
The county cut the appropriation to it.
Right, okay.
For a year, right?
Well, cut it completely because we never reinstated the appropriation, the, the village took care of that.
Any other questions?
No.
I think. If we look at a headway, we need to focus it toward just that that operating village.
Absolutely.
And not worry about all these, don't say you're, you're rolling back all these, that these are minute.
Every one of these agencies will come to you with what they are going to request and what they're looking at, what their needs are, I mean, transit had a millage issue that didn't pass the last year, last year they had two, two mills that were point two nine nine four. This year, they've got one that expired in twenty four. If they're gonna ask for something new moving forward, they'll have to determine how much they're gonna ask for. Do they need point six or point five? And, and again, the different groups that are on here will have to come to you and get your permission and what to ask for moving forward. But they shall have a recommendation on what they're looking at.
But if all these don't renew, it would detriment to the organization, the village doesn't pass.
Absolutely.
I mean, to the quite a vantage point going.
Oh, and, and voters may reject it, I mean, our county doesn't have a transit system because the voters rejected their, the renewal and, and what was going on, we don't have MSU extension. So the voters may reject some of the specially elected villages.
Well, I hope not.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll see you later.
Five discussion items, A, MSU extension annual agreement, come on up.
Can't believe.
Hello? Sorry. Well, can't you believe Tom?
Tom's here.
I was reviewing a quote, I can't believe the pricing, I'm sorry.
Jase, scare me for a minute. Hi, how are you? Good morning.
Fine, how are you?
Good, you have the floor.
Okay, well, I sent the memorandum of agreement that is signed between Ogama County and MSU Extension, or with the university, quite honestly, to Tim, and my hope was that if there were any changes that the board wanted to make to the agreement, I would know in advance because the county would like to be the last signer. So it makes sense to be on the committee to hold to discuss if there are any changes desired. The substance of the agreement has not changed since the prior year or for the last few years. The increase in cost was three percent. I project that the village collection will cover that increase with no problem. And so if there are any changes to recommend to the agreement, it would be helpful to know now. Then I will send it to our contracts and grants administration for the university assigned, and then it will come back for the signature, and it would probably be a resolution of the board, I'm guessing, at a future meeting to sign the final agreement. And then it would be fully executed.
Questions?
Has anything changed in this agreement?
No, just the, just a three percent increase in costs. That's, the base of the agreement remains the same.
The amount of the agreement is included in their, the proposed twenty four budget for extension.
So on line number eight, that, that's the total amount you're asking for, right?
Yes.
Your number what? It's eighty two thousand six hundred and fifty nine, right? So what you're looking at?
One of eighty two thousand six fifty, yeah. It's in C.
And that's paid in quarterly payments, university bills, well, you would know because you review the claims. Sorry.
No, that's fine, sometimes you get that.
Yeah, and sometimes I explain things to outside audiences, not to the people who know, so it's just, you can't take the educator out of the.
Tim, did you have anything to add to this?
No, other than that it is included in the proposed budget. And the MSU budget was balanced with, with that included.
Commissioner Scott, did you have anything?
No, I don't.
Commissioner, what's he?
So Joe, not, not to put you on the spot here, obviously, you know, I'm a big supporter of MSU Extension.
Yeah.
And I think it's really important that us commissioners know, you know, some of the items that you guys are doing in the county and the impact that it's making in the county. Could you just give off the top of your head a few of the, the items that you've seen as a big impact, say, in this last year, so you know, we can kinda?
Yeah, well, so as you know, we just hired a new four H program coordinator. I would have had her come to the meeting to meet you all, but she's at our statewide new staff orientation today in East Lansing on campus. But we have continued to maintain our youth engaged programs. We had quite a slew of programs. This is actually, we're right at the beginning of the four H year, so it follows the school year to some extent, so we're at the beginning of the twenty twenty four four H year. In the twenty twenty three four H year, we had a lot of direct engagement with youth at, at the local libraries. We've created quite a strong partnership with the local libraries to deliver programming and our prior program coordinator, Enya, did a lot of outreach with youth there. We, we had a few students go to four H exploration days, which is an opportunity for youth to visit the campus. We'd like to grow that number, certainly. We are still in support of our youth project clubs that, like the livestock clubs that you see their work at the county fair. We're still engaged with, with those groups and still supporting those volunteers. In the agriculture arena, Phil Durst works quite closely with dairy producers, both in Ogama County and in a wider area. He came to the commissioners meeting and talked a little bit about how his work impacts people. It's interesting, when you look at just Phil's impact, he is having an impact here, he's having a statewide impact, he's having a regional impact when you look at a multi-state region and an international impact, so he just told me that his, his and colleagues of his proposal for a conference in China around dairy production was approved for twenty twenty five, which, so I said to him, so no plans to retire? And he said, not right now, and I said, thank God, because we really appreciate the impact that he's having. With nutrition programming, we're working closely with partners like My Michigan Health, with the schools, with Rock and the ISD to have impact with youth, with, with adults, with older adults, help them understand how they can improve their own nutrition. And then in the realm of community development, we have worked closely on the statewide housing plan. We worked closely as a, as a, with the economic development. When we, when there was discussion about ARPA in twenty twenty one, we co-facilitated a session with the, with the EDC around what that money means for local units. We continue to offer that kind of assistance, new county commissioner training. Any requests that we get, we do our best to make sure that we are providing an educational program that can meet that need, so thanks for asking. We, we always want to do more, and we're looking forward to doing more. September twenty first, I think is the same night as another meeting that the county's gonna host here. We're hosting the business after hours, so you're all invited to come to that. Learn more about our programs, we're gonna have an ice cream social, so everyone's invited. And we'd love to have you here to, to learn more about what our programs are.
What day is that, please?
The twenty first, it starts at four thirty. Yes, we'll be in the lobby, so we'll try to calm it down, so we're not interrupting the meeting that's happening at five thirty here.
Yeah, and I, I'd just like to add to that, so you guys have heard me talk a lot about this regional housing partnership steering committee, I mean, when we first started this, well, in Gaylord, just started, and then in Alpena, MSU Extension was there and they pretty much facilitated the meetings, so, you know, they have their hands in a lot of different. We obviously know this housing situation could be huge for our county, so.
Absolutely.
I just think a lot of people don't know what you guys, you know, you do a lot of different things.
We're good at information, we're not great at sales, we can do better with man, with map marketing. But anytime I can talk about what we do, it's one of the things I'm passionate about, it's why I like my job so much and why I like talking to the public about it, so thanks for asking.
We will put that on for a resolution. Thank you.
Okay, I will send it to university for signature first, so when you put it on for resolution, it'll be signed by the university.
It's, the resolution just will authorize the board chair to sign, so whenever it's ready.
Because it went to our legal team?
It, actually, they reviewed it last year, and I didn't see any changes in it. So assuming that's the case, it'll be a quick review.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks.
I actually have another meeting, so I'm not being rude, but I can't stay for the rest of the meeting.
Thank you.
Good day.
You're welcome. Item B, Michigan Indigenous Defense Commission Annual Agreement.
Okay, this is not really an option for us in terms of accepting this, this grant from MIDC. The grant amount is eight hundred forty four thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, forty one cents. A county has to contribute sustaining amount that we've contributed over many years of one hundred forty nine thousand seven dollars in one cent. This is a program where we are complying actually with the state directive that we have indigenous defense available through the courts. There are changes this year that were somewhat significant, you may have even read about some of them, the MIDC directed that all attorneys who are under contract under this program make a minimum certain amount, which in some counties has created a bit of an issue because their prosecutors are now coming in and saying, we want to match what MIDC directs for the indigenous attorneys. We, we may or may not hear about that at some point, but right now we seem to be able to straddle that line pretty well. While I say this isn't really an option for us, this is a program that has to be provided and we have to, under the way this whole commission was structured, contribute our amount, but fortunately, our, the amount we're contributing has, has not increased, so that's at least steady. Overall, the program seems to be working well, we are not spending all of this money each year, that MIDC fund has actually a significant fund balance in it. It's not available to us to spread over anything else because it's directed by the statute only tend to the MIDC function. Now, a little bit of a side note, there is discussion in Lansing about the way the MIDC or the way the indigenous attorneys are employed. We have a system right now where we have a contract and there are several attorneys, you'll see this contract probably in early October. We'll list the attorneys who are involved and the approximate amount for each attorney, obviously, some of this is dependent on cases. There is a movement gaining some momentum in Lansing to say that the program under that guise doesn't work, that they're gonna suggest that we actually create an indigenous defense department in the county. That's it'll be interesting if that actually comes to pass, because now we've got benefits on top of the wages. Whereas right now, we have the one contract with our attorneys, it's a flat amount, we know what that is, and that's it. So that's coming down the road possibly as early as next year, when these agreements are put out. We'll continue to monitor that, but in the meantime, I would recommend that we just simply approve this grant for the coming year.
They're gonna wanna create an, create an indigenous one, did you say, I'm sorry?
An indigenous, indigenous defense department, so like about the prosecutor's office, you would have an indigenous attorney's office. Where we would put that, I don't know, I mean, we're talking, you know, potentially, you know, a few attorneys and obviously the support staff that goes with that. I don't know where we would do that, I'm sure we could squeeze them in somewhere, but, you know.
Does that mean? Is the state gonna pay for this, or are we gonna?
Well, the state will continue to pay for, I can see there, eight hundred forty four thousand dollar, we'll still have to contribute that sustaining amount. About one hundred forty nine per year. If there are additional costs that come with that, the expectation is the state would pay that.
Well, I don't wanna shove another program down our throat that we've gotta pay for.
Believe me, there are enough of those.
Commissioner Scott remembers, he used to want us to pay for it. That's why with this indigenous council, when I was on that little board there, I was not real happy with that, because I figured we're gonna have to pay for all of it.
Yeah, well, the one forty nine that we pay is based on the average amount that was paid before this whole program was put into place four or five years ago. And what the state says, we want you counties to continue to contribute that, because that's what you were paying, but any additional costs beyond that, the state has to pick out. And there are enough of us monitoring this, that if there's ever a whiff of a cost coming to the county, we will be prepared to go straight to the legislature and say, no, introduce them to that little thing called headly and say, you will pay. And so far, they've been pretty receptive to that. There, there's also a lot of discussion in Lansing about the entire judicial system and how this whole thing is funded, there may or may not be reforms coming along with that too, so this may dovetail into some of those conversations.
Questions? Commissioner Scott?
Yeah. Does the fund balance have enough to pay for this year's share?
It has, we have grant money coming in still, I think the fund balance will actually grow again this year.
So we could take that money and leave it in the general?
No, you have to leave it in the MIDC fund. If something like a directive came to.
Fund balance doesn't, they have enough to cover our share.
We have to contribute our share.
No matter what.
No matter what.
No matter what.
Okay, all right.
Can our share, is that set, is that one hundred forty nine thousand, who sets that rate?
That was set several years ago, when the whole MIDC program was introduced to the counties. And it was established as, you know, the, kind of like a maintenance of effort. State's philosophy is you were contributing this much to indigenous defense already, we're not going to add to that, but we want you to continue in order to qualify for the eight hundred thousand. Need to contribute, continue to contribute your one forty nine.
We could have to pay for all of it, so. Richard, Wiltie. Anything? Okay. Do you have to reply for this each year?
Yes.
So is Tracy the one that put the legwork into this?
Right.
Should be noticed for that. All right, thank you. Item C, Andrews Technology Agreement.
Yeah, a few meetings ago, I mentioned that Andrews Technology was you know, purchased by another company. It's not KFC, but it had those kind of initials to it. But to make this happen, we need to change out our time clocks. But to also incentivize us to do the conversion more quickly, we were offered an agreement where we purchased the time clocks, but then the transition costs, so those costs for training our people on the new system would be absorbed by the successor to Andrews. The total cost of this, and I apologize, I just looked online and it looks like that invoice was cut off at the bottom, but the total cost of this is four thousand seven eighty. This, we would normally take through an administrative form sign off, but because of the transition, Andrews is offering to continue our current pricing for five years, we had a five-year agreement when we signed on with them two years ago, they're saying if we sign on now as added incentive, they will provide all the training at no additional cost and will continue for five years, our current rates. This is, I say Andrews Technology, to make sure you understand, it's the time clock system. But they'll continue that out of that contract now through twenty twenty eight and holding our current prices. So that's the incentive, and I've already contacted them, we've tried to reserve some dates that are best for our people on the conversion. They promised us that the conversion isn't that difficult, most of the screens are gonna look the same, there might be a different color here or there, but generally, you'll see everything and apparently it will do more just in terms of reporting and other things that might be useful to us. But what this does is kicks all that off, it also gets us in early on the conversion savings involved, I think it's definitely worth the price of the two time clocks. If we want to buy more time clocks, we always can, but we have two right now, and those two have to be swapped out.
What's the cost of that?
Four thousand.
Four thousand seven hundred eighty dollars.
Oh, just, that's a swap all?
Right.
We only have two? Time clocks, one in the county building and one in corrections?
Transit. Transit, yeah.
There's that one in corrections?
No.
I know they weren't utilizing, but I thought there was one over there.
Well, they could very easily be installed over there. But no.
Tom, do you have anything to add to this?
I don't, I'm glad, I think I had said something to Tim about the rate or whatnot, I'm just glad that they locked the price in for an extended amount of time, it's not our fault that they got bought all, but we're taking the brunt of some of the cost, and I thought they should justify that.
Questions, Commissioner? Commissioner Scott?
No, I don't, I think we'll put this on, put this on the, the meeting for a resolution.
Commissioner Wiltie? Commissioner Simmons?
They don't have one here.
Over here in the annex building?
Yeah.
They have one in the county building, they have one in transit. We don't have one in corrections, we don't have one in the sheriff's farm, and we don't have one here.
Do it by, you can still clock in by computer. They don't have to have a clock.
On your phone? Is that correct, Tom?
That is correct, you don't have to have a time clock to. That is correct. You don't have to have a time clock to clock in and all. It's um there's a G O fence around the buildings here. Where you can punch it off your phone.
We only need one.
Or transits. I'm not sure what their policy is.
How far away can we go, Tom? Can we go all the way to transit or not? Or we open the fence up for everybody?
I don't know the answer to that question.
That's that's quite a large area.
I would imagine, considering the amount of customers, I mean, say that you're a bank. You don't have it opened up for a radius around your corporate office. You would have it around each branch. I can't. See to where you couldn't isolate it to a specific building, but transit doesn't use their phones. They only use their clock.
Good at. Questions, comments?
I don't see anything on this billing uh that would isolate out a clock, so we'd probably have to talk straight with them. I was, am I not seeing hardware here or something? You know, do you have this what I'm looking at?
You scroll down underneath the, it's in the second group where it says two each is the synergy biometric terminal at two thousand ninety dollars apiece.
Okay.
For for that's your clocks right there.
Alright, yes, sir. Yes, sir. So two thousand ninety dollars, it would be a.
Two clocks.
Would be, you know, each clock would be two thousand ninety dollars. So if we could have, if we could, if we could drop the one, we could save two thousand dollars. So, Tom, I guess find out if we can operate with one with transit being that far away. But if it opens the fence up. To have to include both, then I I don't like that idea. Cause that would mean that anybody could punch in it within that fence area. Miles apart.
I think they should keep a time.
Literally, literally, you could. Be coming to work, live next door to the transit, punch in there and then drive to work here.
You can see where you're clocking in. I can, if people, when people clock in in the parking lot, I can.
Well, that is true.
See.
Yeah.
I've been pointing out though in transit, um all of our employees. Working here, for instance, have a workstation that can actually come into their desk and clock in if they need to, or on their phones. Transit, first of all, not all of our drivers have a workstation, so they don't have that benefit. And many of them frankly don't have smartphones that would this would work with. So I think that was the logic behind putting the clock in out there. So as the drivers and the dispatchers come in, they literally just put their fingerprint on there, clocks them in, they're good to go.
I'd like to keep a time clock at transit in here. Two time clocks for all these departments is.
I agree.
That's why with me too. That's why with me, I was just looking at options.
Well, that's fair. We'll put that on for resolution. Item B, purchasing policy amendments.
Assuming I caught the conversation correctly, this change starts on page seven. In fact, that's the only place where it is. And it concerns opening the bids that that come in. So if we send out an R F P, proposals are brought in. And uh what this change would do is uh require that those proposals be opened at a public meeting of the appointed board commissioner committee that issued the request. Or by the board of commissioners, then any person's desiring to be present when the quotes are open there are uh invited to attend. Now, this tries to catch everything. Um we'll use the Parks Commission as an example. Uh working on a R F P right now for an electrical upgrade at the R F or at the RV park. So the way this would work is that we would issue the R F P like we normally would. They would be brought in at a certain date. Recorded that they were in on time and then would not be opened until the Parks Commission met. The bids will be opened there, read aloud, maybe some conversation back and forth between the. A commission as to which bid, you know, it seems to be the most appropriate and so on. And of course, al- also opens the opportunity. To Parks Commission to say, this is all well and good, but we'd like to talk to the vendors. And you bring them in at another meeting, you do interviews, whatever it is you need to do. In the cases where it's a department that's issued this uh issued the R F P. So let's say it was uh for paving of a parking or something like that. There's not a border commission that uh is designated to do that. Those would come here to a committee of the whole meeting and would be opened at the committee of the whole meeting. Same process would follow. You'd look at those, you'd say, you know, if there's one that's obviously the best, you would, you know, move it forward from there. But if you wanted to interview contractors or anything like this, you would have that opportunity to make that schedule. Uh the idea was, as it was discussed uh last meeting, is to make this uh as transparent as it can. They're being opened publicly, so there really is no question as to whether or not the public could be there to view what was happening, hear the conversation uh and move it forward.
Commissioner Simmons?
I thought I read someplace when the, when the bids are open. There usually isn't any discussion done. It's kind of so, everybody has a chance to look, look at the bids. So they can discuss them at a later date.
Yeah, and this could be at the discretion of the committee or commission then. So if, I mean, if only one bid comes in, you know, that makes it pretty easy. Uh and sometimes two come in, but they're so widely, you know, different that it's, you know, it's very obvious which one you wanna go to. So that this would leave open the option. Yes, I think if you have like five bids and it's a complicated project. You probably don't want to do anything more than because you've got a lot to digest. So it's just gonna depend on what what it is that's been bid out and you can make that determination as as uh you know, fits the need.
Speaking of bids, how are the bids put out? How does the public know about these bids?
Well, a number of ways. If they are a specific item, we just issued one uh. Well, for instance, when we did the well uh for the gear part. Um we know a a number of businesses that do well uh well servicing uh throughout the county. If we can identify those, we direct mail those. We also put an ad in the paper. In that case, we had like. Three different things that we were bidding out all at once, so we're able to put that into one uh ad and just says request for bids and it's how. We also will post it on our webpage and when we did the. Transit uh bus wash, uh there are also a couple of uh. What you wanna call them, yeah, um like. You know, member organizations uh that have contractors as their members and they put bids out to their members. I can't remember the name of the one that's in Livonia. There's another one in Midland. Um let's say it's A B C or something like that, but they have members. And they will distribute the R F P to their members. So those are people that we wouldn't necessarily know who they were, but they're getting, getting the information out there. So anyway, we can identify a potential vendor. We try to contact them one-on-one, but we do those advertisements too in case we miss somebody.
I was just curious because there was many bids coming in. I know all the contracts are real busy, 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 busy. And they like to go for the great big jobs versus the little smaller jobs, so.
Yeah, and I mentioned this story once before, but I was a little disappointed because we actually had a bite on the. Uh building out at Transit from uh Three Rivers and they saw our R F P through the Midland Agency, which they were a member of. Uh and they were concerned that, well, you guys have made up your minds, you're going with a local bidder. And I corrected him. I said, well, not only have we not made up our minds, we don't get a lot of bids. So I would encourage you to put in a proposal. Uh we never got one, unfortunately, but at least we know that that R F P got the exposure we were hoping for with at least one other vendor.
Questions, comments, Commissioner Scott?
Well, all the other uh. Paragraphs in this uh in this. Part of eighteen opening bids, the your. Your position is listed in just about every uh. Uh every paragraph, is there any change needs to be done there or is that? Are those just small?
Those are the.
After the opening.
Yeah, those are the legwork that has to go on, you know, contacting vendors and letting them know things. And uh there's one in here of a proposal um. If there's questions about whether or not the proposer or the the vendor is qualified. Uh you're you're allowing me to contact that vendor to make that call, you know, to obviously bring that information back to the board or committee, but. Uh that's just the background things that happen to make sure that you have all the information you need to make the right call.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons, you okay with that?
Have you had an opportunity, Commissioner Simmons, to look this over closely?
No, just. The proposal that was just put in there today, I'd like to look at it some more. Um. How do we get that uh? Timestamp versus somebody just writing it along when they received it. I like to have. Have it timestamped, so.
I probably would uh use the resources of the clerk to do that, uh because you've got the, I don't even know what you call that machine. Stamp machine.
What's your concern there? They're not meeting the deadline? What's your concern?
No, no, no. Just like, you know, when they came in and if they come in after the deadline, then you can't open those.
Yeah.
Because the deadline was X month unless you extend the deadline. You know, I just, and that's the way it was uh. I know it's like, where's the buggy we used to go or some buggy too, but it's always been done this way in the past, so there's no question when that, when that came in.
Or we just hope we get one.
Pardon me? I hope we get a bunch.
Right, right.
Well, if we write that in, is there anything else that?
I don't, I don't, I don't know. I haven't had a chance of that. Uh I'm a slow reader.
We just.
There's a lot to all of this as far as the purchasing policy and.
Well, we passed the whole policy. It's in place now. What what is at question right now is what's in red?
We did, but but.
What I'm saying is.
If there's any other problems, I'm bringing it up at a later date.
Yes, right now, I don't see them. We don't wanna put it up for a a question on the next meeting then.
Would you like to for Commissioner Simmons, would you like to further discuss this or are you okay putting this on for a resolution for next week?
We put on a resolution, but if I see a change six weeks from now that I think should be made, then.
You can do that at any time.
Bring it up again.
Yeah, can do that.
Item E, fiscal, would you guys like to do, and and I apologize, I guess I should have asked, uh the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget or would you rather get the USDA patrol grants?
Grant.
Out of the way and then go to the budget. Well, I I agree. Let's do the grant patrol cars and then a budget can be our final thing, so. We're not feeling rushed or go ahead.
Okay, opened my email this morning, literally minutes before the meeting and received notice that USDA has approved the two grant proposals that were put in. Uh back in March and uh resolution that was passed said the. Uh we authorized, just simply authorized the application for the grant for the purchase of. Uh vehicles, uh one costing sixty-five thousand, the other seventy. The total uh that USDA would fund for these two, based on what they've approved is seventy-five thousand one hundred, leaving sixty-one thousand four ninety-seven. Uh if we accept the grant, that we will have to um pay uh as part of the match.
Hold you, hold on, Commissioner Simmons.
So the question is um, you know, whether or not you want to accept the grant because it is a sixty-one thousand. Four ninety-seven commitments, a sixty-one five, you know, rounded off uh commitment uh to accept the grant. So the vehicles involved. Uh one of them was a detective vehicle. And the sheriff and undersheriff are here and they could probably tell us exactly which ones would be replaced.
Do you guys like to come up? Are you flipping a coin? Are you thinking about it or?
It's the grant guy.
Good morning.
Morning.
Were you guys aware that this was gonna be on here today?
No, no, this is for actually.
So does this have to be uh approved by Thursday? I mean, is there a reason that since we just, they should release this information, we're talking about it today?
We are because the email from uh Bryce at USDA said um they'd like to see this approved as soon as possible. I think they're looking at their fiscal year, which ends what ours does on September thirtieth, so they're gonna wanna get these uh all wrapped up as much as they can. Um if um. Yeah, give you at least, you know, a whole other meeting cycle to think about this if you don't wanna jump right into it. Uh but it literally eight forty-five this morning, it showed up, so here we are.
Are you guys okay talking about this or would you rather wait?
Well, we can talk about the basics, I don't.
Okay, go ahead.
So uh uh both grants were submitted. So the idea was behind the one is a replacement detective vehicle. So the detective currently is driving a Dodge Charger. That Dodge Charger, the plan would be to replace it with this USDA grant, put him into this. I forget, six four. And then we would convert the Dodge Charger to a patrol unit. Which would give us a patrol unit, put it in fleet. Um we currently have. The the ride that the sheriff was in. Has developed some serious problems, so it's been benched and put over to the posse car, so that would in theory be taking that place or. One of those two. So we convert the Dodge that Detective's currently doing, and then we have the second vehicle. Which the second grant would be for a second patrol car to add to the fleet. We've got a couple of vehicles. Sixteen is the primary starting to really give us problems. We've had to replace a water pump. Couple of pretty serious things that have gone off. So that was the idea behind putting in those two, the the rotation back when we created. Same that plan.
The capital improvement.
Capital improvement plan. It was to do a rotation to maintain the fleet. So the fleet then, as we phase out cars, we get new cars, we make sure that we have a safe and operating fleet. And it was a three-two rotation. So with these two grants, it would give us this fiscal year, the two replacement cars to stay on what was originally. When we started to create that system. So. What kind of questions are we thinking?
Missus?
So the the sixteen is the oldest um patrol car we have in.
Sixteen is not the oldest, but it is the one that's given us the biggest problems. For whatever reason, it's uh that type of Dodge Charger. Um. It was developing these problems. It blew out one of the lines, then we had to do the water pump. So we're having a lot of issues with the cooling and and then the transmission on it too is not the best. It's starting to to fail. So it's kind of used as a more. You baby it a little bit more to keep it out on the road and. Or as really currently the sheriff is driving sixteen. They came over into that.
Are these two cars already in the budget for next year, your budget?
So the budget that was put in, one of the two. Um. From talking to Tim, the two fifty-nine mileage budget, when the final numbers are put together in the proposed budget, there wasn't enough for the second one.
This would cost us to go back and. We configured those budgets to make sure we had the funding.
So one's there and one's not.
Have to go back and firm that. Either way, I mean, we would have to go back and look just to make sure that we have the funds set aside to meet our share.
I think that's information we need.
Yeah, when did we get card number sixteen?
Um, I don't hear that as. I've got right here.
No. Was it brand new when we got?
Yes, yeah.
In two thousand sixteen.
No, it's just the number.
What's number?
Car number.
Number of car.
Is it? We're looking, I'm looking right now, yeah.
Okay, I will.
You got a card number two.
Thought you'd know it.
Now, off the top of my head, but it's kind of convenient. We've got this new system. It's called the. Assets or something and I've been working diligently trying to update.
We got a lot of different new things. You don't use every, every one of them.
Oh, I've been trying to use them, but I just gotta find them.
I'm a time card.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
I knew you were gonna throw that out there.
Hey, now, uh one question I got, if I may.
Great.
Nothing has been ordered?
Just on top.
Nothing has been ordered at this point, no, because it was pushed off.
Very good.
This is just the approval of the grants that we.
Well, we would ask that question one other time.
Go ahead, undersheriff.
Still trying to find it here. There's a lot of stuff on this list. I don't know if you've ever looked at it.
It's on our county website, correct?
Uh this is part of the G L system.
This is that asset management.
Yeah, is, I thought we were gonna place that on our county web, like, is that something we all have access?
I don't know if it's on the webpage.
Like, all of our information is going, it is supposed to be in there, correct? Like tires, oil changes, everything that the county owns.
Yeah, so what I do with that, that program, which we're gonna update the mileage on the vehicles in that program based on the. Oil changes, when I get the receipts and stuff for the oil changes, really going for service. So I'm updating the, the uh. Mileage on it and then I'm attaching all the receipts. So if we have repairs, the general service, any of that type of stuff that's involved with. Specific vehicles is attached to, just like with your flames and all that type of stuff. Right to the vehicle, so we can go back and see a record of repairs. We can go back and see to make sure that we're, there it is right here.
Where do we find that at, on our system? So the commissioners can.
It's in the B S N A system. So I don't think this is something that we've put out for just.
Yeah, it was just internal, so we can create stuff.
What about commissioners? That's what I'm asking. Where where can we find it?
I think you're gonna have to call and ask one of us to. Provide what you're asking for. This is all, it's uh all part of our uh whole financial system.
Well, I'm looking at, uh, proposed. A proposed, uh, road patrol, seventy thousand for vehicle purchase and. And a proposed sheriff's office of sixty five thousand. Twenty three, twenty four. And I see the administrator's review on the sheriff's office, sixty five. But nothing, nothing yet on the road patrol.
Right, because on the road patrol, when he put together his recommendations, when we discussed it, I don't speak for Tim, but he said that. The way the two fifty nine budget worked out of time, he has attracted that vehicle line item from the village budget. So the administrator's line takes that money out, so we, like you said, we'd have to go back and take a look at that budget, see what can move around. If we're gonna do that second grant in the village.
The sixty five that's, um, proposed in the sheriff's office would. Cover our sixty one, uh, five for obligation.
Does one replace one completely, or are we going to sell one car off?
Potentially, we, because with the second car that we benched, the sheriff was driving, you've got two that the posse could utilize to keep them out of the newer cars type of thing. So we can look at selling one of those two cars, whether it's the oldest posse car or the, the sheriff's ride that has issues that we're not investing money in repairs. So at least those two, sixteen that he's driving right now has eighty nine thousand, three hundred and twenty two miles on it, and it's a twenty nineteen. That's where we're currently sitting and that was. That's the one I had.
New water pump and bad transmission at eighty nine thousand.
Eighty nine thousand.
That's what I'm looking at with my Taurus, it's got a hundred and fifty two thousand on it, water pumps going on it. It's gonna cost eighteen to twenty two hundred dollars to fix, so I benched it.
Four years.
So fifteen.
Well, if we're replacing. Is there anything at all that we can take off an old car and put on a new car? Anything at all? Because that's the thing that happens, we get a grant to pay for thirty thousand of a sixty thousand dollar car. We pay, pay the other thirty thousand, then all of a sudden we're putting on thirty thousand dollars more additional stuff on top of it.
But the biggest problem is the model years change.
Motorola sells you a radio, it's the same.
I wasn't done talking.
All right.
But the, the parts that we can use, we will definitely utilize, but as far as the console. And all that type of thing, that normally has to be replaced because of the model year.
These cars that are purging and, and they go into road patrol, that's not. That's not part of the road patrol million.
It could be.
I mean, it's road patrol, that's why we pass a million, so you have vehicles and people and. Overtime and under time and all that kind of stuff, that's what million is supposed to cover, is my understanding.
My only comment on that would be the first one, the way it was submitted, was submitted as a detective car. So the explorer that would be purchased would be the detective car, which is under the general fund or the sheriff's office. So, and then we would use the one that he's using currently and put that into the fleet for two fifty nine. So I, I mean, that's just the caveat, you can still move the money into the village. Cause it, it ultimately will give another vehicle for road patrol. But that first USDA grant is for detective rea- vehicle. So that's kind of why we split it up between the two.
I personally, I, I don't think, I, I appreciate this information, I think it needs to kind of sit on the background for right now until we get this budget balanced, um, to see if it. If these vehicles can be, um, somehow incorporated into their year or if it even is. Um, I think, I think we should continue to talk about this, put it on the next committee, the whole, I, I don't think we're in any place right now to make a decision. Um, myself personally, so.
I agree with that one, what for?
It's definitely not off the table, but I don't think it's on the table right now.
Something to figure out where the funding comes from.
Something for you two to, to, to continue to collaborate and come back to it with, with ideas. Thanks, guys, are you guys okay with that? I, I don't, I'm not. I'm not comfortable with making a decision right now.
As far as I know, um, just said as soon as possible, uh, but I will as soon as this meeting's over. Shoot him a reply saying, well, this is where we are.
Right.
Process.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, fiscal year twenty twenty four budget. Was there any new information provided, um, since our meeting on Tuesday?
Not by email or, um, system, and these are written first. There are developments, um. Coming around right now, and if I need to. Ross, I can. One of the things that was asked is that, uh. Total of, uh. Total. Amount, if our incentivized employee, all of our incentivized employees were to retire, um, only had a day. So of course, I don't have an actual number for you, but the first thing I needed to do was look at the entire. Workforce, if you will, figure out who's in what division, we have, uh, four different divisions of the defined benefit, and then we have the defined contribution. Each one of those has a different, um. Qualifying criteria for retirement, so division twenty, for instance, if an employee has been with us for. Twenty five years and they're at age fifty, they're eligible for full retirement. Uh, otherwise, it's fifteen years and fifty five and sixty, everybody is qualified. Uh, so crunching all those numbers, it was necessary to anyway break all that out. We have twenty two employees as we sit here today that would be eligible for full retirement, eleven of those are on the defined benefit plans, one of the four. And eleven of those are undefined contribution. And what I wanted to do was to show you just, uh, as far as impact further down the road, we don't have that many who will, uh, now qualify, you know, in the coming years. So after one year from today, we'll add four employees to that, uh, uh, equation, and they're all defined contribution, uh, after. Uh, between one and two years, another four, two and three, two and so forth, that we get to, uh, uh, seventy six employees who are greater than five years away. From being able to qualify for retirement. Unfortunately, when we dig into something like this, we tend to find other things that we didn't expect, and that was the case here. Uh, with the defined benefit plan, I've mentioned once, uh, a couple of meetings ago about, uh, one division. That we knew was wrong, it only listed one employee, we knew there were more than one employee. Um, and it now identifies seven employees in the defined benefit categories, uh, that are misclassified. Uh, what does that do? Well, it, uh, depends on which division you're in, some divisions pay more. The employee pays more than other divisions, and so the first thing that we're gonna have to do is get those corrected and working with Tracy and Mers. We have that process down and, and will be able to make those corrections. I don't know what the implications are beyond that, for instance, on our actuary study. Uh, I don't know what the implications are for the specific employees, in particular, I have two that have not paid enough in, according to their collective bargaining agreements. Uh, have not been putting enough into, uh, their contribution. So I'll be contacting our county attorney as well and, and strategizing on how we correct this. Uh, I'm not, again, sure what the obligations are, do we have to, you know, uh, garnish from those paychecks, what wasn't paid? Uh, is that just forgiven? I'm not sure, uh, a lot will depend too on Mers because that kind of thing tends to impact. Our total, um, funded. Level, uh, which, again, correcting the, the whole actuarial study will tell us that. So where I am right now, uh, the next two stages are, now that I have these twenty two identified, and we might want to look out, uh, one or two years as well. Again, incentivizing early retirement, there are things that can be done, but to identify the entire compensation package for those employees. And the second step is, if we were to replace those employees, what would that cost be? So in each of these cases, clearly, you know, after. Um. Qualifying for retirement, these are long-term employees, they're literally at the top of the pay scale, so the assumption is if we replace them. The replacement comes in at the bottom of the pay scale, so what's the difference? That's the number we're really after. But another number that we have to consider. If twenty two employees say, okay, I'm taking the early retirement, keep in mind that we also have obligations to pay out for unused vacation time. And a percentage of sick time, and that's a substantial number, uh, or at least it can be depending on who it is, but if it's a long-term employee. Probably has a pretty substantial number, uh, to go along with that, so how do we deal with that? We'll have to discuss. Do we delay hiring, uh, until that is paid out, you know, what, how do we wanna go about this? So those are all variables that I still need to put together, put dollar amounts on, uh, so you can look at those, hopefully. Barring anything unforeseen happening between now and Monday, we can have that for the Monday meeting, at least give you some really good idea what kind of number we're talking about. Now, second development that's occurred, um, just speaking with Ladonna this morning at the. State level through the unemployment insurance office, they have something called a work share program. Uh, what that is, is if we, uh, end up having to lay off employees, this work share program encourages us as the employer. To retain that employee, but reduce their hours to twenty hours per week, and the state would pick up the other twenty, so assigning your typical forty hour, uh, work week. Uh, I don't know a lot of details, I'm pretty sure the state's not gonna, uh, pay for half of the benefit package. I'm pretty sure that's the case, so that will factor into whether or not this is something that we wanna look into, although. Uh, it's one of those, right now it sounds too good to be true, but if it's in fact, the state will pick up twenty hours worth of pay, that's worth doing some more calculations and finding out. What, how that might impact our, uh, workforce. That doesn't reduce the reduction goal that we're trying to achieve, but if we can get the state to kick in. After the wages, you know, that could be pretty significant, so it's something worth exploring. Uh, and my request, Ladonna has a contact in Lansing that she's, uh, reaching out to. Uh, we're gonna try to pull together a meeting as soon as we can so that we can be educated as to what all the nuances are for that program. Uh, and then factor that into everything else that we're trying to do. Another thing I was asked to do was to come up with, uh, uh. Draft or another alternate budget if we were to, uh, send all of our inmates to other counties. Uh, again, uh, you know, it's only been a day, but, um, hopefully, just something in front of you by Monday, so that you can see that as well, uh, as an option. That's the new information I have for you for today.
So where are we at with, um, getting more specific information from the DOC on? Maybe it's, I know, just a couple of days ago, we talked about this.
Also on my list, and I would like to sit down with DOC and the sheriff's office so that we're all hearing the same information.
Sheriff, you had said you were gonna try to gather more information, have you, has, again, we know the timeframe has been short, have you been able to gather any information? Please.
No, don't worry about it. Gave Lieutenant Howard the task of. And short notice, uh, he, he did a wonderful job for us, so, um, we have samples we wanna pass out.
With copies for everybody?
Yeah. Kind of follow along a little bit.
Hey, have you had an opportunity to see this?
No.
No, we just, just got it done this morning.
Keep going.
Okay, you think.
Yeah, we're good here.
Tim, do you have one?
Um, actually, Nicole got a lot of this information for me, cause she keeps all, all these records as far as the numbers. Um, the first category. Was based on the last three years. Of what it would cost at thirty five dollars a day to house our inmates at another facility. Not including the cost of all the medical. Transportation, bringing them back and forth for court, taking them there, hospital, whatever we gotta do, or to. If they close the jail, to staff it for a jail lockup, would you have to have a jail? Would we have to staff, staff it as a jail lockup over there? So it's not including all that, but that was the figures of. The last three years for our inmates that it would cost. You have to have a jail.
It's mandated.
It's mandated, you have to.
A holding, holding cell, right?
Seventy two hour holding cell before they can get, until they can get trained.
They've gone by a holding cell.
Yeah, we have to be able to house. Wherever we get in, until it can be transported to the other facility. Um, the housed in revenue are the. Places we got it from, the hos- like the first ones, Osco to Calcasas, we held somebody that they, they couldn't take care of or handle. For one year, that's when the Calcasas came in, and the totals are on the outside. The RO was the rocks common when they had COVID breakout, we took all their new people until they were. Uh, cleared for them to start going back to their facility. But them are the numbers that we've brought in for that, the medical reimbursement and stuff that we've probably paid for. But then we're reimbursed by the other counties, depending on which county the inmate was from, they pay us back that money. Because it was their inmate. Commissary sales for the past three years included the pop and the e-six.
Is that Ogama and the, uh. Other counties, or is this just?
The commissary?
Yeah, is this, this, these figures, is this for?
The jail. Anything that they order inside the jail.
Yeah.
Um, the phone commission, that's a hundred percent profit through the contract, phone. Company takes out their percentage and we get the other percentage, so that's just straight, there's no fees to the phone company, they take it out of. When the inmates do their calls, deferred felons, um, Van said approximately a hundred thousand a year, he does a program. Where he bills the state. For inmates, I don't know a lot about this one, but they're an actual DOC inmate, they're there, they're on detainer. So we can bill MDOC for housing that inmate until their sentence, he keeps track of all that and bills. And the fingerprinting drug test and PBT, that's probably a low estimate, that's everything we do in the lobby, um, Nicole will pick appointments and fingerprint people for CPLs. Um. Uh, uh, several different things that have to be done at a facility like ours. Um, the PBTs and drug tests, we actually have a contract now with, uh, Drug Court where. Lori Reeve calls and gives me a list of names. So at least once a month, we're doing like five or six drug tests just for her, and then I get the results back to her. And it could be a couple times a month, they just started here in the last six, eight weeks, but then certain court reimburses us for the drug test, once we bill them. And then the PBTs we do in the lobby. On a daily basis, we do at least one, sometimes three or four a day, and they're like five dollars a piece. So that was a breakdown of that, and I. On the second page, I did talk to Ron Trashy yesterday as far as some of the questions. That were brought up before. Um. Closing the jail, um. He didn't think that was a good idea or wise, um. But if that's the case, if it comes down to that, they have to be here during the meetings, during that process, you can't disclose it, they can't actually sit in on it. And the part of closing the cell blocks, I talked about that to reduce our capacity, he said. The way we're resigning the positions that we need, that we cannot do that, it wouldn't change the staffing as far as the locations and the job needs.
I would want to have a conversation with Mr. Trash. That's not consistent with what they've done in other counties.
Um, yeah, I put it as a number on there.
I think the biggest thing on that was the facility layout, the way it was designed, that's what, what I understand, so that. More than welcome to call him for sure.
Who was the engineer in that jail, do you know?
I, I don't know. It was open in two thousand ten, I don't, I'm not sure.
Why, I guess, I, I understand what you're asking, but why is it relevant?
Why would you design a jail like that?
It's already there, we have to decide what we're gonna do with it, going forward.
I think he's going off his staff analysis when he watched us for however many weeks they were there, sitting and doing it, needing. Showing where you need the positions and for safety and security of the officers, that's how he did the. That staffing analysis that he actually wanted to do.
Yes, I knew, rhetorical question, I'm sure, because it's, you know, presented by. Bold to you, but remember, after I was first hired, the study happened and we were told we needed to hire two additional. But the jail didn't change in terms of its physical layout or structure, so are we, were we not in compliance for all those years up to that point? And what was the penalty for not being compliant?
I don't believe we were, we were.
You'll have that, Mr. Trash, I don't know.
Can we see a, we've never seen a copy of that analysis?
No, no, we really haven't, I mean, there was just a cover letter that I received that says, here it is, and I think, uh. Former lieutenant got the report.
Three page document, maybe April twenty nine, but lists his information. Definitely send it back home. Chillow Zoe is the one statement he makes. Chillow Zoe is the one statement he makes. U S Department of Justice National Institute of Corrections Staffing Analysis Workbook for Jails is utilized for this analysis.
So this isn't the state law or a state rule that says this is what your uh, staffing ratio needs to be. It's, I referenced this and this is what I think, it's different than a, like a mandate.
And, and the way I understood it when I had touched this and whatnot, is that before the analysis of staffing level wasn't something that was part of the inspections. They did the inspection, they seen everything was operating within what you should be in the safety type of thing. Once the analysis was done, then it's on their radar. So now, when they come and do inspections, they're looking at this analysis as part of the.
Okay, I mean, these are the questions that we'll want to sit down with Mr. Trash and ask about, because this sounds to me like, this in my professional opinion is optimum. So this is what I'm going with, that's different than saying the statute mandates that you have this many people, therefore you shall.
And the other thing that was discussed, and again, it'll be part of that conversation, was that now this is this, we should probably send it to the county attorney. It was, it was presented that moving forward, any lawsuits that may come, this is gonna be A number one on the lawsuit is a- a- again, just one of the factors that was presented when the study landed on our desk, when we started talking about it.
My, my criticism of this is, it's almost like they're telling us it's all or nothing. You do all of this, or you are out of compliance, and while he says, you know, closing the jail wouldn't be optimum, I agree, but if we can't meet what they're telling us the staffing needs are, then maybe the only option is to go to the lockup. And go that route, and I don't think that's what they really mean.
What's the information that Tom was able, through the initial conversation, we can definitely set up something, whether it's a teleconference or something.
I, I think that should be at the law enforcement committee, I think you guys should be involved in this conversation as well.
Yeah, we have a meeting today. Is there a way that we could try to get him here in person? Is he at Lansing?
He's been here.
He sat right here at table with us.
Last week?
No, no. Few years ago, he's, he sat right at the table with us.
How did the inspection go last, it was just a regulatory?
No, it went well, there was three things that we were not complying on, but I was, I had to write up an action plan that we addressed them. And one of them, they were just, they were little things, but then I wrote the action plan, he accepted the action plan, puts it in the file of it.
Nothing staffing related?
No.
Has there been any further conversation with Glavine County, anybody?
Did you hear from administrator yet?
And I think that was a very bad sign, that, that we heard that it wasn't even discussed in their meeting.
Well, I think, I think their budget meeting is going just like our budget meeting, they're, they're scraping they're looking at every place they can scrape up something, or savings, or revenue.
Well, you would think that that subject matter would come up.
I don't know, I don't know how long the meeting lasted.
Well, they did.
They did, she said that the register was in and out with the meetings, and it was a very short discussion, and she probably missed it.
What was that, can you recap?
Don't want him to speak.
That's fair.
Did talk about the jail, they're going to have one of the subcommittees get together to choose a company to do an evaluation of the jail structure. Then they can determine whether or not the jail itself is worth putting the rest of their ARPA money into, that would keep the jail up and running another ten to twenty years, if not, we would need to consider contracting with another county to house our inmates.
This was from Blue Rec.
The rest.
Is it relevant?
Want to say.
So again, it was kind of great, but I don't, I don't. Um, it kind of sounded like it's very beginning stages, yes, that's what I had been told as well, very, very early stages, yeah.
Well, yeah, this is all, we've talked, yeah, we've, we've been.
Right, but, but how it's, well, not, not exactly, I guess, if, we're talking about them coming up with a budget plan just like us, within the next twenty-some days, um, that to me means some decisions were definitely uh, needing to be decided. Um, I don't feel like that decision's going to be made in the next twenty-some days.
If they can stay in their buildings thirty days, then, then they can go ahead and pass a budget that's, that says October one, that they're still in that building, and it's okay. They're just like anybody else, then in forty days, you can change the budget.
I understand that, you, you, we've been told that by, by the two of you guys numerous times, I, I get that.
Well, that's not just me, I mean, that's just, that's, that, the state of Michigan will tell you that.
But again, the information I was.
I have that writing.
There's no decision, that's my understanding, anytime soon on, on what their plan is. Anything else, guys? Thank you for this information, I, I think the law enforcement committee and you guys and the administrator, as soon as you guys are able to have a meeting.
I have a question to ask.
Go ahead.
It says in here, twenty-two, twenty-three about Calcasas.
There's sometimes another jurisdiction will contact us, if they have someone that either they're having issues with, or they just need to change the location. And we will, we will take them on and charge them housing fees. They're at a, they had an inmate that couldn't get along there, or was causing them problems, we took him for like a year, or almost, or a long time, I can't remember. But it was because they were having issues with them, they asked us if we would take him, and we accepted him and charged them housing fees.
Is that policy still going on?
It's a mutual.
It's a mutual kind of agreement, we do that with Ross Commons. Yeah, I have Cooper Aeronet, they, they can't, they've causing issues down there, or they're disrupting the facility, they'll send them here. And usually, we can take care of them, and I've done it with them, we've done it with them too, sometimes it's just a change of location for them, calms them down, they don't cause other general issues, it's kind of a mutual thing that goes back and forth, it is kind of trade just to keep the facility running.
I, I appreciate this. I, I, I appreciate the, these figures that you and Nicole put together, um, what I would like next to this now is, is the cause, like a analysis. I would like added on to this.
See, he wouldn't give me when I asked about the lockup. What kind of staffing you would have, he was, I couldn't get that information out of them.
If, if I, if I could say.
Go ahead.
Um, if we have a lockup situation there, I, I'm just gonna stick my neck out and say we're gonna have to have at least three to four correction officers to man that twenty-four seven. And when you reduce numbers over there with employees, I'm gonna have to shift our, our, our day cars or patrol cars that patrol our, our streets, they're gonna have to do the transport.
Well, that's.
Transport, court runs, medical runs, and we still have the bond payment. Um, and, and is there a facility that will take in our fifty employees, or our, our, our inmates, fifty inmates, would it be close about the, the transportation to run them back and forth to court? Um, so there's a lot of things and a lot of money to consider. Um, possibly be overtime. And you're taking, you're taking our road patrols off the road to take care of these uh, these issues that will, that will be.
Another option might be to hire another corrections officer that just does transport, the position ends up being full-time. And that way you're not impacting your forty hours, it'll be a forty-hour a week job.
Well, you'd have to get, you'd have to get.
Well, the court doesn't happen on the weekends.
I think, I think we could go back and forth with that all day long, um, but I would like more information on this, this, as far as what it costs us versus what these figures are.
You can make it stretched a hook, it costs a one-point-five million dollars.
It wasn't finished, um, I would like to look at, when we, when we're done with that, the overtime on, on some of these, I see the overtime is still pretty expensive. Um, with certain departments, so when we are done with this, I would like to talk about that.
I'll talk, I'll talk more when we get, Ellie.
Law enforcement meeting?
Yeah.
Perfect. We gotta get this information fairly quickly.
Cause you got a deal, something say?
Well, it's just.
The only thing I would say is, um, a matter of this size and significance, you know, Commissioner Simmons brought up the idea of possibly closing the jail. I think we need to, I'd like us all to meet with this guy, not just have him come to our law enforcement meeting, I think he should come to one of our meetings and meet with all of us.
Maybe do a phone conversation with him with the law enforcement, and then bring him, bring him to a, a regular, pardon me?
Like we did with the lawyers, maybe?
Yeah, we'll see what is, I just think it should be all of us.
I think definitely we need more information, this is excellent information, but I think we need more information, um, do you guys agree by looking at this?
I got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
You're, you're four people, if you have that holding deal, you're gonna get four people, they're gonna be twenty-four seven. I don't think four's gonna cover it, I really don't, I mean, somebody calls them sick, or, you know how it is.
We're just. I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking four per shift. There you go, four days, there, four nights.
Eight, yeah, that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, that's more realistic. Uh, maybe, maybe a couple less, but it's gonna be, you gotta cover both shifts, you gotta have.
Manage the store, I know that.
Oh, it's four shifts, right? Not two shifts, it's four shifts.
Sixteen people to watch one cell.
Where do you get four shifts?
Well, in order to do seven days, you don't do seven days, uh, twelve hours a day for one shift, and seven days for twelve hours for the night shift. You have to go three and a half days and three and a half days, plus night, plus day, so it's four, it's four shifts. So you're saying sixteen people, then you're saying for the four shifts, four people per shift.
How do you have out of the jail right now during the day? How, how, how many corrections officers?
I think it's five.
For that whole jail? So you'd have to have more?
Is it five per shift right now? Four at night, five during the day? So you have to have just as many for one cell as a hundred and forty-four beds.
I just thought I'd bring that up.
No, no, that's right, I mean, I can see four guys being there right now, or five.
Five, yeah.
I don't know, you know, but you got one cell, one guy, one inmate, you got four people watching them?
What is bringing in a female inmate?
Well.
You can't have one guy watching.
What does Osco County do, they have two cells up there.
Let's find out.
Do they have sixteen people up there to watch them?
Let's find out.
The under sheriff watching it.
What's, what's the state police do though?
Okay, guys.
Trying to get, my second question is, is if you do close the jail, is it gonna be like standard, and you can't open it back up, it's done?
No, we, I, I, it's all. M D O C's, they regulate it all, pretty much regulates, you know, I. We have, we have. Closing the jail, he said that they had to be part of the meetings in order, and approve it for it to close, I don't know, that's their job, I don't. I just calling, I just calling to get information, we give to you guys, because I like the numbers and stuff, uh, no, we haven't had no numbers to work with, to look at, to compare, and I'm just trying to do what I can to help.
Well, I appreciate.
In one day notice, yeah, I got it yesterday.
Yeah, we appreciate, yeah, can you, I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Can you reach out to Osco and find out what their process is?
Wrote it down.
Mr. Scott, did you have something?
No, I appreciate getting them, getting these numbers, they're enlightening. Um, but there are counties out there that's doing less, um, you know, um, and if somebody else is doing, I don't know why we can't do it, and uh, you know, basically we've looked all, all over this stuff trying to get, get something, so it's gonna be either or. Okay, if we keep the jail open and manage the way it is now, you can just look at your sheriff's office, budget going away. Is that under, that's non-statutory. That's, that's a million, that's a million dollars, where are we gonna find the money?
We're checking an account, we're gonna come and rate.
We're, we're, if I may.
Go please.
We're in a, we're in a difficult spot, no doubt. But like I said before, we start moving bodies around, reducing services, and then we're gonna ask for a millage. I don't see that happening, I mean, that, I, I don't, and, and I, I, I don't want to see that go away because of what is out there. This, this community would not be safe without law, and we cannot, we cannot depend on MSP. I'm just throwing it out there, because, because we know, you've got, you've got a hu- you've got seventy-seven, uh, years of experience here, we know what we have to do, what, 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 what we have to do to make it happen. Got seventy-seven years of experience right here. Um, if, if we don't provide the services that we told them we would, if that goes away, this community is gonna be in sad shape. I'm telling you that right straight up, and I'm not saying that to scare you, it's not a scare tactic, it's the hard truth that I know what we're dealing with.
Could you show us those figures as far as, and I apologize, I, I don't mean to interrupt, um.
You did.
Go ahead, and then I'll finish my statement, I apologize, I just apologized.
I mean, let, let me ask Tim, how far away are we, if we stay on a constant thing, and we keep, we keep bonding everything that we're doing, how far before the state steps in and, and sends a county manager?
Good question.
Because once they come in, and they step in, we are done.
Yep.
This board will come to meetings, every meeting, but we will have no power at all, none. We, we, they will send a manager in here and don't, and it's happened in other parts of the state, and I'll tell you what, the first thing they'll do is cut and slash like you never saw before.
So I'm looking in my crystal ball. There will be a hesitancy on the part of the state to do this, because their experience has not been that good, nor is their track record, uh, in terms of assigning emergency managers. That being said, um, yeah, we probably would get through twenty-four, and then the state will see a million-dollar deficit, and that will definitely get their attention, uh, there'll probably be some intermediary, intermediary step, or treasury comes in and starts making uh, strong suggestions on what you do, and it probably would be sometime in twenty-five, when they say, okay, we, we can't let this continue and step in, now, what form will that take, I don't think it'll take the same form that our experience over the last fifteen years or so has been. I think the state has learned that they have a difficult time running a local municipality, that's just not what they do. But they're not gonna just let it go either, uh, you know, you'll also end up impacting, not that we have any projects pending, but you wouldn't be able to bond anything, you, you just simply wouldn't. That problem is taking care of itself with interest rates anyway, but you know, that's the other downside, the state could withhold revenue sharing. Well, what does that do, upsets us in deeper holes, so that's not helpful, but that's one of the uh, sticks that they have to say, we want you to comply, and if you don't, you're not gonna get your revenue sharing. Um, but, yeah, sometime within a year to a year and a half, I'm pretty confident some kind of action would be taken, and yes, all of us would be on the sideline.
They've been, they came here, what, they came here four years ago, and they addressed our no fund balance, so we're already on their radar. And, you know, I mean, whatever form it takes, we're in, we're Sheriff, you gotta understand, you got two pages in there, you got a page in this, this, all this stuff here, you got a page in, and you got one page in this. And those are the things you make decisions on.
Public safety.
Okay, okay, I, I get it, I get it. But this is, all of us are sitting here, we gotta make decisions of all.
Why I said, uh, that's why I said, we're, we're in a tough position right now. But you start hacking and, and, and moving people around, that millage will go away.
He didn't finish.
I got to twenty-eighth this month to make a decision, and I gotta send them a balanced budget. I cannot send them, I cannot not send them a balanced budget.
I get it.
Or I'm in violation.
I get it.
I, I think we're open to any, any, any at all, uh, uh, ideas. I think this is difficult on all of us. Um, I, I don't know how we got here to this point with one point two million dollar deficit. With, with the changes that we have made over the past four years, positions with, um, I, I don't know how this is the worst budget we've, we've seen since I've been sitting here.
I'll say something. In two thousand eighteen, I brought to the board the idea of, of, of a road patrol millage. And the sheriff at that time asked me, is this a supplement millage or is this replacement? I said, my thought is replacement. It would replace the dollars that were spent on the sheriff's office. So that we could free up that money to put in the budget because we are running the deficit. This is exactly, this is exactly what the Vladwin just tried to pass last month, was exactly that, that one point five mils they were looking to get was going to replace the budget they have for the sheriff's department. Now in twenty twenty, we put it on the ballot, you have change of commissioners, we put it on the ballot. But we did not replace the money. We added two. We did not save our budget at all. Sheriff, you've got four more deputies than the previous sheriff had. The previous sheriff ran the night patrol with the same amount of people he had before. You, you convinced the commission here to, to give you four more deputies, more, more cars. We did not do it. Now we're sitting at two million dollars operating the sheriff's department between road patrol and sheriff's office. And the debt, the debt is still there, the debt is still hanging with us. Now that's what I tried to do. I tried to put it in as a, that's why I don't feel that bad about this deficit on a personal basis, because I tried to put something out there. The commission made a different, different path. That's where we're at.
We're here.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Go ahead, Sheriff.
Times has changed, crime has changed. Back then, when you're talking, we drove junk for cars, absolute junk. I was waiting in the, in the report room, waiting for my car to get fixed, so I could have a car to patrol for that day. We're getting where we need to be. We're, we're giving the people the service they need.
Now we have to figure out how to maintain it.
Absolutely, but don't compare, don't compare yesterday's crime to today's crime. Totally different.
Do you have?
We have more population up here.
Do you, do you have reports of, of say arrest or, or tickets to show us? Can you show us that information as well? I guess I don't really know how it's
I'll, I'll.
Relevant, but I think it helps for the public to see as well, um, how, how, from to the, take Commissioner Scott, prior to the twenty-four hour patrol to now. Um, again, I think this is gonna be very, very complex, difficult decision for us to make, but I, I agree with certain aspects that Commissioner Scott just said. Now we have to figure out how to maintain it. We, we can't maintain it if the funding's not there. It, the public did speak, the public definitely wanted it. I would like to maintain that service because they, they, they made that choice, but we gotta figure out how.
Totally agree. We'll get that stats together. Well, I'll get, I'll get from when I took over. Everything we've done, if we have that, and I'm sure we do, and then I'll, I'll go back. We'll get that, we'll get that.
Well, let me make it clear, I'm fully supportive of sheriff's office and, and law enforcement and, and everything, but we don't have money. We're writing, we're writing bouncing checks right now.
If we can cut someplace else, I.
We're just, we don't have the money.
That should be the last thing we cut is public safety.
It is. In two thousand sixteen, we cut after the headly vote didn't happen. We cut back, every office in the downstairs got cut, the courts got cut, everything got cut.
We did get the information of statutory versus non-statutory after, uh, the meeting. We have that information.
There's only so many things we can cut, and we've cut everything but the sheriff's.
Oh, you cut the sheriff's department, you might as well cut the prosecutors off, you might as well cut. Because none of that stuff is gonna go there.
Have we talked about the non-statutory list, the ones that are, are not?
I don't think we've talked about it, I know that.
I thought you were gonna provide us a list of.
She did, by email.
Um, can you just make one clarification, though? I just wanna make sure, um, particularly for anybody in the public listening, we are not bouncing checks right now.
We will be, if we approve this budget, obviously we're going to be. Thank you, guys. Uh, uh, you know, I, I, feelings are high, I, I, I understand it, I thank you for being respectful. Um, and keeping us professional, please gather afterwards and come up with more information.
We do have dealers out, we just learned yesterday too, that the, the new phone system that they have contacts, so they're gonna start doing some legwork for us as far as if there's potential of getting inmates from other counties. So, uh, we just found that out through a conversation yesterday. The phone system should be up and running first part of October, and Nicole was in conversation with, where we learned the information about him seeking out inmates, but he also said a revenue will go up for the phone system because it's all underneath one umbrella. Smaller potatoes, but we'll try to put some numbers to that.
Anything's helpful.
We're looking at a couple of other revenue lines that I have not got to Tim yet, but we've got a couple of other ideas to increase a couple revenue lines, uh, animal control in the jail. So we're gonna put some numbers to that, and I'll get him to Tim so he can look at them and then plug in some things, so I, we're also looking at some other options too.
They brought up federal inmates again, has there been any information on that?
I have not, and we have not explored that. My understanding was they took two bites at that apple in the past and got denied. So I don't know what, what legwork, what changes would have to be made in order for us to be considered for federal inmates.
We were told that, and then we were told that they're not accepting any more applications, whether or not that was true, that was quite, quite, quite a while back.
And it was partly, I told Roscommon, they had a separate thing on. Just for federals, that's why our jail doesn't qualify because it's all one.
Yeah, I thought that's.
That's what I heard.
We didn't know why.
Someone approached me and explained to me that they, they put a separate addition on just the House Federal.
So, um, last, in the last week, I spoke with the jail administrator at Roscommon. And, um, you know, we had, basically, the conversation was mainly just for federal inmates, because they've been holding federal inmates for a while. And she said that, um, you know, typically in the years past, sometimes they'd have anywhere from fifteen, twenty, twenty-two inmates federal. And right now they have four, and she says the future doesn't look good for that. Um, now, they're getting paid eighty-four dollars a day for these federal inmates, but obviously that's a huge cut for them going from fifteen to twenty to four. And the future doesn't look bright for an increase in that number. And then she said that the process for them took over a year. Then to come through, do all their research and studies, and then to be able even get to that, the standing of being able to hold them.
We meet next Monday to further at nine AM, correct? Yeah, I will not, I work, I will not be here. Um, anything else, guys? Any information? Uh, yeah.
Next week.
Tuesday night in the evening. I can't, I can, I'm, I'm booked right now, three weeks out.
I've got a township, my township meeting Tuesday.
We've already posted it in, I mean, of course, we have time.
I missed township meetings Tuesday, I, the budget took priority over. Uh, township meeting Monday.
Can we do the twelfth in the evening?
Is that Tuesday?
I'm just asking the question, any conflicts with anybody?
I think this is pretty important.
Uh, there is a conflict in this building, um, as well, we could meet at the county building.
Because the fans will be off, five thirty at night.
Right, right.
It's up to you guys. Again, I can't, I'm, I'm booked right now, three weeks out.
And then, uh, Tim's got some other stuff he can bring to us on Monday that we talked about today. So on the, so on the twelfth, and any objection to doing it five thirty at the county building? Instead of nine o'clock in the annex.
Suggestion, we go ahead and meet morning, Monday morning, and then we can decide on Tuesday, we'll still have an eight, we'll still be able to fulfill, fulfill that eighteen hour postings.
Okay, just let me know.
Because he's got a township meeting, I have a township meeting.
On Tuesday?
On Tuesday.
Right, I had one Monday, but again, I missed it, but it's up to you guys.
I have two on Monday, I don't have anything else Tuesday.
If Monday doesn't, isn't fruitful, they not have to have a, a Tuesday.
With where we are right now, I definitely think we, we do, but maybe you guys can come up with a lot, a lot more information.
Yeah, we have a, a meeting at five thirty on the thirteenth too. On, on the thirteenth of, uh, September, Wednesday. We have a five thirty meeting here in the annex also.
So that's, okay, we have a meeting before the fourteenth, before we're supposed to approve the budget.
So you just wanna eliminate Tuesday? Does that Monday? You can't be here Monday.
No, that's okay.
You'll be here Tuesday, right?
Go ahead.
To clarify, you are not obligated to approve anything on the fourteenth. It's just the hearing. So, you know, you can take public comment, but you've still got another cycle. I think the twenty-eighth is, um, right now is on our calendar, it's the approval date.
Yeah, it is.
So let's just keep it how it is, right now, we, we are meeting.
At the annex and the annex.
On Monday and Wednesday, right?
I got Tuesday on there too. Do we not do Tuesday then?
We have Monday and Tuesday, nine o'clock here, and Wednesday, five thirty here. That's, that's what we have posted right now.
Yes.
Uh, as, um, Commissioner Scott said, on, on Monday, you could decide if you wanna do nine o'clock. Uh, if you wanna continue with the nine o'clock on Tuesday, or if you wanted to do a Tuesday meeting at five thirty, there would still be time to meet the posting obligation, so you can
Okay.
Just let that one kinda float right now as the, you know, on Monday.
Yeah, I won't be the nine o'clock meeting.
You'll be the Wednesday's five thirty.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with any meetings, I thought you guys were aware of that.
I'm just making sure you're in.
You get, okay, you wanna make the decision now? Monday morning, and we're gonna have a Tuesday meeting.
Yeah, it's just a course, and we can decide Monday morning.
Perfect, thank you, huh? Oh, yes, please. Yeah, I know. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Any public comment in the room?
Any suggestions would be helpful.
I have a comment.
Please.
We've had a lot of meetings. A lot of them have not gotten us anywhere.
Correct.
A lot of us are being taken away from what we could be productive in. Is everybody aware of what information they need to bring to the meetings so that we can have a good productive meeting? I felt like today was more productive than any of the meetings that we've had so far. But they've just are like we're spinning our wheels and.
I don't feel like we're spinning our wheels, but I know what you're saying, we need to maximize every opportunity. It was a good meeting, Tim, and we've got a lot of information, we're hoping that flows in one day and.
Hasn't meant a lot of time in between meetings, unfortunately, but I agree with what you're saying, I think all the information that we've requested is, has been readily available. Um, but time has been crunch time, and, but this is the most important thing in my opinion of, of the year.
And I agree with you, I just, I just making that comment.
That's fair. Any other public comment? Any public comment on the phone? Oh, Commissioner Simmons?
Well, I was thinking about, um, we have the Monday, Tuesday meeting, maybe we should just not do the Tuesday meeting, have the Wednesday meeting.
You're gonna.
The reason I say this is because it gives people then an opportunity to gather information that we request. So it'll be available on Wednesday, may not be available on Tuesday, just for fun.
I think you're gonna make that decision, like, uh, Commissioner Wilson said, Monday morning, there's still ample time, there's eighteen hours to post it.
Okay.
I made it very clear that I will not be at either nine o'clock meeting, if it's changed to the evening, I, I can make it. Any other? And yes.
So, you're gonna, you're gonna keep me, keep hearing me say this. I mean, we all know, you said, you said it a number of times. Make sure David. The significance of what we're doing right now. Again, we don't have a lot of time. We need more time. We're rushing, we're rushing, we're rushing, this is extremely important stuff. People's jobs, people's livelihoods in this community are on the line. We have a budget that we can give to the state. We're not married to it. Commissioner Simmons, you always shake my head when I say this, we're not married to this budget. Just because we pass this right now, doesn't mean in six months we still have to be, be with it, we, we just need more time. We need more time, we cannot rush this. We need more time.
And that's your opinion, and I think we can respect that, however, we've had six months to come up with this budget. This is, this deadline we've known. There, there, there's been no change to the deadline. There's been very minimal changes to our revenues and our expenditures. This is all information that we've had.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying to you guys, so you are prepared within the next fourteen days to make these decisions, you guys are. I'm not prepared, I don't think Commissioner Scott's prepared, these are huge decisions, we need more time.
You can talk at a normal level.
More time.
And that's your opinion, and you're entitled to that, and we are also entitled to ours.
Okay.
So no, I am not com- comfortable passing a maybe or a one point two million dollar deficit. When we'd known this information for an extended period of time, we just started to talk about it. Because we knew that this deadline was here.
Right.
None of this information to us is new. So now the same thing is happening that's happened to us every single year. We gotta pass this, we gotta pass this, we gotta pass this, we have a deadline. We now have individuals in positions that was hoping we wouldn't get to this point. But here we are again.
Understand. I understand, but we're not married to it, we still can make.
And I fully understand.
Why would we make these huge decisions? Yes, we should have been more proactive. I think this, we need to learn from this right now, there's no reason we should ever wait this long. But there's also no reason that we make these major decisions within the next twenty days. Absolutely no reason, we need to learn from it, you guys keep hearing me say that, we have to learn, we have to learn, we have to look back and realize what didn't work. This next year, we have to get more proactive. End of May, we need to start talking about the budget. We need to just, we need just to start doing that, so we don't get in this position again, but we need more time.
I gotta say, Chris, we don't have a budget committee. We don't, back when there was seven commissioners, there was a budget committee, there was three commissioners that were a budget committee. I know Bev Scott was the lead on that for years, and she was a real hawk about things. And we got, we can have two, two commissioners and the administrator have a budget committee that meets every month. And, and, and work on this thing every month, not, we even wait till May, work on it every month. Can we, could we do that? Could we get started with that? It wouldn't even, we could start right in October.
I, I don't disagree, go ahead, no, I'm sorry.
Um, I agree with, um, a budget committee. But I also agree that, um, I know there are people in this building that watch, watch the budget like a hawk. And I would say, um, Tracy would have to be part of that, I would say that Karen Piglowski would have to be part of that. And there's one other person that's sitting in this, built in this room right here that watches budget like a hawk. And that's our registered D, so she's not a financial person, and maybe I'm, but I know she watches this budget like a hawk. I think those three people should be included on this committee, and that turns two commissioners and the, uh, and the administrator, cop drawer.
Well, that's fine, because, because the only. The only limitation is.
Commissioner Scott, Commissioner Simmons was not done, and then you can have the floor.
Joe shushes me when you speak.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Um, I don't even. I just, now you messed me all up here. But I think, I think there should be a budget committee, and I think it should, um, be comprised of, of those, of those people, I just, because, um, when I first came on county commissioner this time, I'll be honest with you, I was in the blind, and I said several times, I, I was in the clerk's office, and I was in the treasurer's office both saying, I cannot work this way, I'm working in the blind, I feel like I have blindfold on my head. I cannot work like this without knowing, and I didn't know. I was like, I was just walking around in the dark. That's why I think a budget committee is very, very important. So, yes, good eyes on the budget, people that work with the monies. So, and I've thought that since I've come on board here, because I knew absolutely nothing.
Commissioner Scott.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to say is, the only. The only thing I wanted to say is the only limitation is that we can't have more than two commissioners.
Right.
That's, that's the only limitation. Other than that, you can have forty people on the committee.
I don't want that many.
Well, I mean, you can have five, six, it doesn't matter. It's just that we can't, we're limited to only two commissioners, no more than that. So, but we could have all, all commissioners could be on it, just have the, a public meeting every time that we. Even have to have, it have to be completely public every time you had it.
Um, I, 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 before I, I came on there, that, once I came on a couple of terms back, there was no more budget committees. Um, I was under the understanding that that's why we, we, we brought on the administrator slash controller. That's individuals here. Discusses, communicates with department heads, has meetings with them along with elected officials. My understanding that that, that was kind of took place of the budget committee. Um, obviously, I, it, it hasn't worked, um, as far as looking at this, this budget. Um, I, I think more discussion needs to obviously occur with that. Um, but, but that's what I, I thought, um. With, with that position, so.
Well, I think you're right. It, it is, I don't, I don't, I don't, my opinion isn't that it doesn't work, but it doesn't seem to work. I'm trying to, I'm trying to work out a, uh, some kind of compromise that we can pass this, a budget, and then start working on this. That you don't believe it's working that way. I think it is. So I'm willing to make the compromise that go ahead and have a budget committee. I'm just bringing, bringing it up, throwing it on the table. That would help you, if that would help you understand how the budget process works, then let's have that way to do it.
I, I guess, how did you not, how did you get out of that, that I didn't understand how the budget process worked?
Well, uh, you're questioning, he, he presented us a budget, and you're questioning that budget.
No, I'm quest, I'm not questioning.
You're not gonna vote for it.
Correct.
So that, that method of him doing this, you're not, you're not agreeing with. He's, he's there, he's already, uh, analyzed it, gave us a budget, and you don't wanna do that, so now. You want him to write a whole nother budget? Fine. Or you write a budget, or we have all these meetings to do that.
It's, I'm sorry, I went too dumb. It's, it's the worst budget we've seen in years with a one point two million dollar deficit. No, I'm not okay approving that, that. That budget. You're, you're correct on that.
We were one point one last year. This, this isn't a brand new deficit. This isn't a brand new debt. This has been here every year. We, we've taken from one fund, we've taken from another fund, we've taken from another fund to pay for this. That's what, that's what these budgets have been. When I came on board, it was the tax revolving fund. I mean, one commissioner wanted to make the interest on the tax revolving fund an automatic revenue line on, on the budget.
You're telling me last year we approved a budget with a one point one million dollar deficit?
No, we didn't approve the budget with the deficit. He covered for the deficit.
Right, so we're asking, how are we gonna cover? Show me how we're gonna cover that one. I'll approve it. If you show me how we're gonna, how we're gonna cover one point two million dollars. That's what I'm asking. You give that to me and I'll prove it.
That draft budget that was presented to us.
With the various options.
Yeah.
So we have to make those decisions on those options.
No, no, no. He gave, gave us a, he gave us a budget, a draft budget. And, and it covered all the bases. But what you don't like is that Gladwin's involved in it.
Oh, okay. I guess I misunderstood you. That there's a maybe million dollars.
Well, yeah, the point is that he's offered you a budget. You don't want it. So now you gotta make another one.
You, you're correct on stating I, I don't want right now. If you can give me something more definitive on Gladwin County and a million bucks, we can sit here and talk. Because the conversations that I had with them did not look very promising. Again, I, I hope it is.
Well, I think this is what Mr. Wilson's trying to say, pass this budget, then we can work on October. When we can start working on the newest one.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Sands.
Um. If we pass it like this is, and we don't get that, and everything stays as is, we're still accumulating debt more than what we have right now.
Yeah.
Cause we're still go, so how are we gonna pay for more than we gotta pay for right now? We all, this man, I'm not done. If we owe one point two million dollars, and we continue getting debt, and this Gladwin thing doesn't come, how are we gonna pay for more debt? Is it more people gonna have to lay off? Is it, is it, is it more stuff that we can't provide? I can't go on a maybe.
Okay, a- all it is, is, all it is, is a timing thing. You can pass this budget in the next twenty days. And then you've got three hundred and sixty-five days to work on the next budget.
To accumulate more debt. Because we're not gonna get that, if we don't get that one million dollars. Something's gonna have to cover that one million dollars.
Right.
You tell me what it is.
Well, right now, right now, you don't wanna pass that, that budget. So you only have these eighteen days to come up with that. What's gonna cover it?
I don't wanna, I don't wanna pass, um. A ma- a maybe lead budget. It's like me saying, I'm gonna go buy a million dollar house.
Okay.
But I'm gonna go buy a lottery ticket because I probably might win. I might win.
Okay, okay, guys. I don't, I don't. I'm not finding this productive.
No, it isn't. Okay, I'll just sit here and not say a thing and wait for you to come up with the million dollars to, to cover that, that budget deficit.
I think that's why we're having these meetings. It's for more ideas, and the sheriff's office is, is providing us, guys, has provided us some ideas today. We have some more to work on, and I'm not finding this very productive. Um, please bring us any and all ideas moving forward. Uh, before we do have to make some very, very tough decisions. Any other public comment?
Uh, yeah, I kinda. So I'm not sure what was said, so I'll just see, see if I see some things.
Can you come up so we can hear you? I'm sorry.
Yep, this is legislated.
Have a seat.
William Ingham, I'm William Ingham, and I'm the MAC leader for MIDC. What that means is I'm the managed design council. I work in creating the grant. I coordinate with, in this instance, with Tracy in getting that submitted. I do that also for Ross Com.
Okay.
And this is legislated to each county. Each county has the option to run it the way we do it. And that's contribute the amount that was sort of capped when this all began. And, uh, or there can be a public defender's office, uh, you can be run by Alpina. You would give your money to them, and they would run you. Or it can go to the state. If it goes to the state, your cap disappears. And you will reimburse the state of Michigan for one hundred percent of indigent defense expenditures. That is a nuclear option. If we are not in compliance, meaning we don't have a plan, you are forced into mediation at your expense. So I understand that there's a lot of budgetary concerns here. Um, that is not part of the regular budget. Uh, the plan was approved by MIDC, so what we submitted as the grant proposal got that thumbs up. The only thing that lacks is the signature of the board to implement that contract. So I would caution the board. To hesitate in doing that, that we would not have something up and running by October first, because the state will come in.
It's on the agenda for next week to approve it. I just, the resolution's gonna be written to approve that.
Okay, yeah. I just wanted to make, now, also if there was any questions.
Yeah, we didn't have any problems. Just had some questions, they got answered, and we said we're.
Okay, cause I only, only heard part of it, and I thought, okay.
No, no.
I ran as quick as I could.
We appreciate that.
Just the process.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Will.
Brenda, I guess you're in control.
Any public comment? Any public comment on, uh, Zoom? Any public comment? And, and the commissioners or anybody else in this?
I'll just say, uh, staying corrected, we're not bouncing checks.
Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all favor. See you Monday morning.
Monday.